Oh, there he is in the back against the wall. Yeah. Yeah. All right, good evening, good to see everybody here, see some smiles and welcome. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District Order, let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and then a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This time you please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Texas flag?
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one goodness.
You please remain standing with us tonight for opening prayer. We have our student pastor Jason Wyatt with River Valley Christian Fellowship Church. Jason, welcome.
Just wanted to thank you guys for all that you do. What a privilege it is to come and seek him first to open your meeting and so would you all pray with me? Lord, we just come before you and thank you how good you are. We thank you, Lord, that if we seek, we find you. If we knock, you allow the door to be open. I just ask at this meeting tonight as young ones are celebrated for the talents and gifts you've given them, Lord, that we'd be able to rejoice in you for that. I ask, Lord, that any decisions or any direction that's made, Lord, continues to be walked through with wisdom because you give it. Bless each and every person that's here in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
All right, this time we'll move to our student speaker on character education, the traits for March, self-reliance. Mr. Edwards, would you please introduce our student speaker?
Yes, I certainly will. Zoe Moreno is an enthusiastic senior at Bastrop High School. Where's Zoe? There she is. Come on up Zoe while I introduce you to everybody. She competes in varsity powerlifting and founded the Bastrop Youth and Government Delegation. For the past two years, she has been selected to represent Texas at the Conference of National Affairs and this past summer she was voted the National Changemaker winner in Washington, DC, winning $5,000 in grant funding. Congratulations Zoe. Zoe enjoys competing in debate competitions, providing community service with pals and working at her local public library and in the Central Texas Opportunity Youth Leadership Council. In her free time, Zoe enjoys cooking meals for her friends and family, reading long book series and creating do-it-yourself models and I want to know a little bit more about that. Zoe will be attending the University of Texas at Austin and will major in political communications. Welcome Zoe.
As the third born daughter of five, I can most definitely assure y'all that the middle child syndrome is real. My parents' primary focus have always deterred to the oldest two or the youngest two, leaving me to my own devices. This lack of attention didn't hurt me, I'm not here to victimize myself, rather it pushed me. It helped me determine that at the end of the day, I'm the only person in my life that I can truly rely on. Don't get me wrong, there have been dozens if not hundreds of times that I've called on my mom to help me schedule a dentist appointment or asked my dad to pretty, pretty please change the oil in my car. Because self-reliance is not about never needing anyone, it's about knowing that even if no one is there, you will still prevail. Even if no one claps, you will still move forward. Even if no one believes in you, that you will believe in yourself. Too often we wait. We wait for permission, for validation, for someone to tell us that we are enough. But the truth is, no one can give you what you already have. No one can grant you worth. You were born with it. No one can hand you strength. You must forge it yourself in times of solitude, struggle, and reliance. Self-reliance is not just about surviving, it is about thriving against odds. It is looking around and realizing that even if the world walks away, you will still stand tall. It is taking responsibility for your dreams, your failures, and your triumphs. Not blaming, not waiting, not wishing, just doing. Because in the end, no one will build your life for you. No one will fight your battles. No one will walk your path. But that's the beauty of it, it's yours. So walk it boldly. Take your pain and turn it into power. Take your loneliness and turn it into self-mastery. Take your failures and turn them into lessons. You do not need saving, you do not need permission, you are already enough. Now go and prove it. Thank you.
We have a real gift of appreciation. Who came with you Zoe? Were you completely self-reliant by yourself?
Dr. Jassik.
Oh, okay.
I rely on him. My pals teacher.
Awesome. You did an outstanding job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd also like to recognize my students from Superintendent Advisory Council. We have two with us from Cedar Creek High School and I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves and tell us what they're going to do after high school and I'm going to start with Naya.
Hi, I'm Naya and I'm going to, I'm a sophomore at Cedar Creek High School and I'm planning on going to UT and studying for a career in the medical field.
Very nice. Joel?
Hello, I'm Joel. After high school, I plan to attend UT and study kinesiology.
Very nice. Thank you all for being here.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. All right, moving along to our recognitions and special presentations, we have the BHS Girls Basketball. Our presenter is Barbara Robinson, the BHS Head Girls Basketball Coach. Please come on up.
So, good evening. Good evening, everyone, to all the board members and Superintendent Edwards and everyone that's present. I am LaBarbara Robinson and I am the girls' head basketball coach and I am honored to say that I am the girls' head basketball coach. This is my second year here and first let me thank you all for hiring me because y'all hired me. I want, okay, this is Crystal Clement, she's one of the assistant basketball coaches and Coach Bain and Coach Gracie are not here tonight because they're in other sports and different things. So, I want to talk about this phenomenal, amazing, record-breaking young ladies. And my hair's died because it was gray at one point. Anyway, so these are your 24, 25 varsity girls' basketball. I'm missing about five, but I wanted to let you know some of their accomplishments. First of all, they had a record and set a record in school history that's never, that no one else has done so far. We won 34 games and only lost five. And out of those, and out of those 34 games, at home, we only, we won 18 and only lost one at our house, at Bastrop High School, on our floor. So, the girls, this is a record-breaking because this is the most wins out of any girls' or boys' basketball sport in Bastrop history. Let's see what else. You know I can't see this, I can't see that because it's locked. You know I can't see that. There we go. All right. So, now look what it did. Give me just one more second. See, look, look what it did.
Oh my God, get out of here.
I don't know how to get out of there.
Go help her on.
Okay, now, there you go. All right, so, what else? I can't see it.
Get out of here.
Girl, she's going to have you standing there all evening. It's in my folder. That's why I took a picture of it until you told me to unlock it. Okay, I'm good at that. Improvise, that's what she said, okay. So, we participated in three tournaments this year and in our tournament, the GM Blackman Tournament, which they've been doing that tournament for over 30 years and what the sponsor, the daughter of the person that it was created from, she actually came and was there a part of our tournament. And they've been doing it for 30 years and Bastrop has not won that tournament in 20-something plus years. So that was one of our accomplishments. Then we went to two other tournaments and we only lost one game in each tournament. And it was in LaGrange and in Taylor, they did, I mean in San Antonio, they did a great job, great job. So, I want to talk about some of their accomplishments. This is Navea Jones. Navea Jones is the MVP, co-MVP of our district. It was her and another young lady. She is also, she made second team All-State and she will play March 22nd at the Cedar Park HEB Center. She's also all-academic and she's also All-State academic. She's second team All-State academic and she is a senior. Alasia Williams is next to her and Alasia is, she was second team All-District. She is also all-academic, and then she's All-District academic and then she's All-State academic as well. First team All-State academic because her GPA was 97-point something and I don't have it wrote down. And then you see all of the other ladies beside her, they are all academic, they're all district academics with honors. No one on my basketball team except one person made an 89 and that's one of the things I am most proud of. And these are, this one is a freshman and those two are freshmen, y'all wait till you see them. These two are my leaders, going to be some of my leaders. I have a few that's missing today. Kiara told me if she was here, she'd give a speech. I'm glad she's not here. I just wanted to say that they did a fantastic job. We thank you all for your support and we appreciate it. When we got to our first by-district game, the stands was full. It was all marooned. I loved it in the back and on the side. Every game we went to, it was all packed and so I thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you ladies, congratulations.
All right, moving along to our Cedar Creek High School Boys Basketball. We have Christopher Young here who's the Cedar Creek High School Head Basketball Coach. Well, this is going to be a hard one to follow, Coach.
I say that.
And it's the ladies.
I don't know what I'm going to do about that one, man. Oh, God. I'm sorry? Thank you. Yes, God, please get up. Yes, a hard act to follow, my goodness. I didn't, I should have went first, man. Yes, hey, let's split up, fellas, yeah, step that way. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Young, head boys' basketball coach at Cedar Creek High School. First off, I also would like to thank y'all for hiring me. Yes, thank y'all very much. Man, these kids standing before you today, they put a lot of work in this year, a lot of time, a lot of unseen hours and it was, it was a roller coaster of a year, to say the least. We started off hot, then we kind of went down at some tournaments and then we kind of found our groove going into district and we kept that. End up winning 13 out of our last 17 games to get second in district. That was big for us, huge for us and you know, I'm just proud of these guys. I had 11 varsity kids, eight of them were academic All-District, I'm very proud of that. Our Academic All-State Awards, they haven't came out yet, but just, just a lot of love for these guys and what they do for Cedar Creek and the bar that they set for the younger kids in our program, I really appreciate that. I have Phineas Copeland here, he clips 1,000 points in his career, had over 100 made threes this season, that's a school record and you know, that's, that's big time. Kenji Franklin, he has over 2,000 points in his career, 2082, I think to be exact. He is the school record holder for most points in a career and that's, that's huge. He's tied for the most points in a game, 48 in a game. He was our leader this year, we kind of went as he went and the guys understood that and they bought into their roles and I really appreciated that. Just today, actually, Kenji Franklin on the All-Region team, so congrats, Kenji. I told you that earlier at school, that's big, man, and thank you for leading the way for us and for these younger kids. Well, we ended this year 20 and 15, that's back-to-back 20-win seasons for y'all and that's a lot to be proud of. I appreciate all the support we had this year. I know our season ended a little faster than what we, what we wanted and that's all right. Every game, we gave it our all and that's all I could ever ask for is this complete effort and the commitment y'all showed really made me proud. So, I think I'm missing one kid out of this team, he's picking up his little brother from track, so you know, that shows the type of kid he is, right? He's like, "No, Dad said I got to pick up my little brother." I said, "Yes, sir, you go do that." I don't want any problems with that. But, man, I'm just super proud of these kids, everything, early morning practices, we had a practice where we had to go to Bastrop High School and practice to get prepared for our playoff game and they didn't complain about it, we showed up, we got our work in and that's really the testament of our season, we just kept, kept the course. And so, once again, thank y'all for your support, guys, thank you for your commitment to the program and thank you for setting the bar and I appreciate it. I hope everyone has a good evening.
Thanks, Coach.
Great job. All right, and moving along to our Bastrop High School Skills USA, we have Derek Hedley here, BHS Automotive Technology Teacher. Welcome.
All right, good evening, everybody. So sorry if I'm a little green around the gills, usually I'm the one standing behind our head automotive instructor, so this is my first year going around, so hopefully I don't screw up as much as I definitely don't want to. So, like I said, this is my first year as head of the program at Bastrop High School, this is my sixth year overall teaching. And the last time that I was here, when we advanced to Nationals, one of my kids who was advancing, their parent told me that some of the board members weren't really too familiar with Skills USA, what it is and what it offers for students. Now, while Skills USA is a student-led organization, very similar to FFA, but FFA, you know, focuses on agriculture, Skills USA focuses on automotive welding, cosmetology, culinary, and just offers a more wider range of competitions for those students, so just wanted to kind of show the program as well. So with me today, we have our two state advancers for aviation maintenance technology, which they were very froggy in wanting to do it, so we usually don't push that as hard because like I said, I'm an automotive teacher, I can tell you what a plane is, but taking it apart, it will stay apart. So, Ethan Miller, he's our second-time district champion, so he'll be returning to state to hopefully take us to Atlanta in June. And this is Dylan Mowery, who's not even an automotive student, he was, he's a welding student who Ethan kind of drug into this situation, so, but we're still very happy to have him, first place and second place at district. And behind me, well, he was supposed to be standing with me, but that's Mr. Rink, he is our new automotive teacher as of January and I like to give credit due where credit is earned, while yeah, my name's on the paper and I would love to take all the credit, like I said, that plane will stay apart, but Mr. Rink is the one with the aviation background, so when he heard that we had aviation students, you know, he went in it all gung ho, let me show these kids what I got. So, while my name's on the paper, he's really the one to essentially give all the credit for and as well as, you know, the student's passion in aviation, they're real, him and the students really are the ones to really get all the support because we usually don't have this as far as moving on to aviation. So, thank y'all for the support and wish us luck at state, hopefully we'll be back in May to tell y'all we're going to Atlanta again, so thank y'all.
All right, moving along to our Regional Science Fair, we have Tabitha Wright, our science curriculum specialist. Welcome.
Thank you. Oh, yes, somebody changed it. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Everly, and school board members. My name is Tabitha Wright, I'm the K-12 Science Instructional Specialist for the district. This year, our third-through-sixth grade students participated in individual or group science fair projects for their campuses. Each elementary campus held their science fair enlisting the help of district staff as well as community members to help judge some amazing projects. Each school then prepped their winners from that science fair to attend the Greater Austin Regional Science Fair, known as GARSF, in February. So on February 22nd of 2025, seven of our elementary schools participated in GARSF at the Palmer Event Center in Austin. From these seven schools, we had 93 projects submitted with 182 students participating in this event. At the conclusion of the event, our district had 15 projects with first-place ribbons, 49 projects with second-place ribbons, and 29 projects with third-place ribbons. I would like to present each school and the names and some pictures of students who participated at the Regional Science Fair. Bluebonnet Elementary. Cedar Creek Elementary. Colony Oaks Elementary. Emile Elementary. Lost Pines Elementary. Mina Elementary. And Red Rock Elementary. Thank you guys very much for your time and if you see any of these kids, say congratulations to them.
Thank you. All right, our last recognition here will be the Bastrop ISD Communications, Cassie Baldrus, Director of Communications and Marketing.
Good evening. I'm going to talk slow because Lori is actually part of this recognition and she's out there taking some photos of the students, which is part of what we're talking about today. So, Chris, why don't you come up here? Here, you can hold your award.
If you'd like, I can go to open, I can go to open forum real quick and come back if we need to wait.
We'll go, we'll go kind of slow here, let's see where she's at.
Welcome.
All right, so I'm excited to be here, this is actually my one year from my first board meeting, so nobody's told you all this yet, but thank you for hiring me. No, so we, last month, we attended the Teesper Conference, the Texas School Public Relations Association Conference, and we do that every year and on top of all the professional learning opportunities, we also got some really cool recognitions. So, the communications department, oh. The communications department earned a total of eight recognitions. We had a crystal certificate of merit, which we received, six gold star awards, and one silver award. The crystal certificate of merit and three of the star awards were recognized for our photography and that's just a reflection of their commitment to really getting out there and getting, capturing all those special moments within the district and our students and our staff and everything going on. And then, just a fun fact, some stats and y'all may have already seen these before, but our department in the past year had shared more than 12,000 photos across social media and the district website and then we also promoted or attended nearly 120 district and campus events as a team. Another thing I'm also proud of is that first day of school, we hit every single campus to get photos, to make sure that we got that recognition from everyone. And then, she is not in our communications department, but I also wanted to recognize our Community Relations Director, Karen Trevino, she's up there in these photos with an award as well.
Where is she? There she is.
But she also received a star award for her contribution to articles in Neighbors of Bastrop Magazine. And then in addition, Karen, Lori, and, I'm glad she's here, Becky Wumble with the Chamber, they also did a session at the Teesper Conference on We Believe and they had, I stayed for part of that and they got a lot of great information, it was very engaging and interactive. So, I just want to say thank you to Chris and Lori and everything that y'all do, I know just about everyone in here has worked with them in some capacity, I'm sure they've taken everyone's photo in here at some point or another, so we're lucky and I'm lucky to be a part of y'all's team.
All right, great, great job. At this time, we'll move into our open forum. The board welcomes comments from district citizens and employees, individuals or group representatives who have signed up, may speak, focusing on public education topics. Please note, the board cannot discuss or act upon an issue not listed on the agenda. The purpose of open forum is to gather input only. Agenda-related issues will be addressed at the appropriate time. We have one speaker that signed up and that's Ms. Becky Wumble, so Becky, welcome. Becky is the CEO of the four-star accredited Chamber of Commerce here in Bastrop, Texas. Soon to be five, I had to beat her to the punch on that. I've been, I've been waiting, but great accomplishment, so.
So, I am here as the President/CEO of the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and first of all, I just want to tell you thank you. Thank you for your partnership. I say this every time we do We Believe MBISD Visit, where you guys are in economic development, believe it or not, you are in economic development because when a business is relocating here, one of the first things they want to inquire about is our school district. So, this is an important partnership that we got to continue to collaborate and move the school district forward. So, I was going to mention the conference, but sold my thunder there, but it was fabulous and I think I had a, Karen, I probably had a talking point with everybody, but maybe two or three of the people in that room where I said, "I know your Chamber exec, if they don't, if they're not partnering with you, they got a problem and I'll call them." So, anyways, that was a great partnership and to be able to spread the, what we need to do to advocate for public schools. So it was a great message to go across the state, so, and I want you to know that the Bastrop Chamber is advocating for you. I have personally been at the Capitol on February 11th and again on February 25th and if you didn't know it, we're growing. Have you heard that? We're growing. It was really cool to be in a room of 90 to 100 colleagues and I was one of two communities that was called out because of the growth that's coming here and is here. And if you don't believe that we're advocating for you, please check out my newsletter article that will launch tomorrow and it's already on our website. But some of the other advocacy efforts that we have going on right now is, we are one of 15 communities in the state of Texas in 2025 that is hosting a governor's small business summit. So please mark your calendars for June 26th, we are doing that in collaboration with the Bastrop EDC. And then, we are going to continue our State of Events and so I would like you to mark your calendars for the State of the County, which is a breakfast on April 23rd, that will be at the Community Center, that's on American Legion Drive, the State of the City Dinner that will be on September 8th, and then the State of the School District, which will be on October 8th, which will be a luncheon here at the PAC. And then, as you know, we have some contested races and so the first candidate forms that we will be hosting is on April 1st. Yes, it's April Fool's Day, but it's not an April Fool's joke. It is, candidate forums will be for City Council Place 1 and 5, that will be from 5:30 to 7 at the Bastrop Convention Center and then we will have another candidate forum on April 9th. 5:30, 6:30 will be for School District Place 5 and then for the Mayor's Race, Place 7, or I'm sorry, three candidates from 7 to 8 on the 9th. So, a community that supports each other grows together and so we need to continue to collaborate and be partners to grow a stronger, better community and I think we have that and we have something very special here, so again, I just want to thank you for your partnership.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our open forum and Ms. Wumble, pass it on to your team over there and board, we really appreciate the partnership. We believe, if you're not on Facebook, follow them, it's fun to see the pictures at the different campuses and what all they do is, yes.
Three minutes. It is a partnership, but it's, it was really difficult going to some of the most recent campus visits when you have a teacher come up and she's hugging you and talking about the dollars that she's personally spending in her own classroom and saying, "Thank you, thank you for bringing us food, thank you for bringing us drinks," and talking about how the students are trying so hard, they are trying so hard. And then also, another visit recently, a counselor out in the parking lot saying, "I can't tell you how much I appreciate you sending out the email about my career day. I filled up all the spots because of what you sent out in an email and that our business community responded." So, and then, I always tease, is this recording right? I always tease at the We Believe visits, if they're wearing a We Believe MBISD shirt... I always tease at the We Believe visits, if they're wearing a We Believe MBISD shirt, and I catch them at Guadalajara, that I'll buy their table. I've, I've said that for three or four years. So literally like two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, it was a Thursday night, pulled up, get out my car, the Bastrop license plates, and this teacher goes, I'm not gonna say it, she said, "Dang it, I didn't have my We Believe shirt on," and she's like walking up with me and telling her husband, telling her husband what, who I was, and what we do, and how we bring them snacks and everything. And then, even though she didn't have her shirt on promoting We Believe MBISD, I went and bought the table and stuff like that, and then to come out to my car that night and have a thank you note from the PE teacher at, I think it was, Emile, was it Emile? It was Emile, the PE teacher at Emile, saying, "Thank you for doing something nice for my family." So, again, it's an important partnership.
Thank you. All right, moving along to our superintendent's report. We have an academic report, advanced academic update. Our presenter is Jennifer Eberly, our chief academic officer, and Cheryl Pinkston, our advanced academics and lot coordinator. Welcome, ladies.
Hi. Good evening. Okay, good evening, Mr. Edwards and board members. Cheryl Pinkston and I are here tonight to take you through our systems and structures that BISD has been building in advanced academics and the impact that they're having on student achievement. We're gonna start with our youngest learners and work our way up and show how the systems align to increase opportunities for our students in advanced academics.
Mr. Edwards and school board, I am proud to highlight the work we've been doing in advanced academics, starting with GT. We've been working to identify gifted and talented students, starting as early as kindergarten. Over the past two years, we've made significant improvements to our identification process in order to ensure that we're recognizing talent across all backgrounds and meeting the goals set by the GT State Plan. Students can be referred for GT testing by a parent, a teacher, or yes, the district. We continuously revisit and refine our approach to identifying students. Last year, we implemented a process using the MAP screener to identify students that were referred at the district level. One of the key successes has been how closely our gifted and talented population now mirrors our overall student body. As you can see from the data on the screen, this method has proven successful. We were able to identify and refer a wide range of students across the district who may have otherwise been overlooked. Even more encouraging, over sixty percent of the students we recommended were ultimately qualifying for our GT services. This progress is a reflection of our dedication and commitment to providing all students with the opportunities they deserve to excel. Additionally, we are making great strides in providing our middle school students with the opportunity to earn high school credit. Bastrop ISD is a wonderfully diverse district, with many of our students speaking Spanish as their home language. We found a way to help these students earn high school credit for their home language through the Avant Stamp Test. In January, we began testing eighth graders, and I'm proud to report that to date, two hundred and ninety-four students, fifty-four percent of those tested, have met the graduation requirement for two or more years of foreign language credit. This achievement opens up exciting opportunities for these students. They can now take advanced placement Spanish classes and possibly earn credit at college as freshmen. It also allows them to take other courses related to their future goals by freeing up valuable course space. At the high school level, we continue to provide our students with opportunities to excel through the PSAT and SAT testing, advanced placement courses, and now the chance to earn college credit through OnRamps, a program we introduced last year. Looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, I'm excited to report that we've seen a six percent increase in the number of students participating in AP testing, with sixty-seven point seven percent of those students identifying as Hispanic or Latino. Over the past four years, we've witnessed consistent growth, not only in the number of students taking the AP test, but also in the number of students achieving a score of three or higher. Just last year, we saw a forty percent increase in the number of students earning college credit through AP courses. Our district's efforts have also garnered recognition from College Board. For instance, Cedar Creek High School was one of only two hundred and thirty-seven high schools worldwide to reach a fifty percent or higher participation rate for female students in the Computer Science A exam. We provide Girls' STEM Day, Girls' Coding Day, and other events to continue building our interest in the STEM field. In addition, the College Board launched the AP School Honor Roll, recognizing schools for their outstanding work and encouraging students to take more AP courses. I'm proud to share that all three of our district high schools had at least two percent of students take five, five or more AP exams during their high school career. Additionally, Cedar Creek and Circa had forty percent of their graduating classes take an AP exam, while Circa had twenty-five percent of its graduating class score three or higher on at least one. Circa was even awarded the AP Bronze Honor Roll for excelling in all three areas under review. Beyond AP courses, we've also seen a rise in the numbers of students taking the SAT, further expanding their opportunities to apply for colleges and share their test results. Another exciting opportunity is our partnership with the University of Texas, which we began last year with our OnRamps courses. These courses allow our students to earn both high school and college credit, working alongside a campus instructor and a UT professor. Last year, we started with OnRamp Statistics, and seventy-two students earned college credit compared to seven students in AP. This year, we expanded the program to include OnRamp Science courses and additional math courses where students have access to tools like Canvas, providing them access to materials similar to an on-campus college student. As shown on the data slide, we currently have five hundred and eight possible scores that will provide both college credit and a CCMR point. These initiatives are transforming the high school experience for our students, ensuring that they have access to rigorous coursework that sets them up for future academic success.
So as we continue to build our advanced academics programming from the earliest grades up, we continue to see great gains from our students that's evident in the data that Ms. Pinkston presented tonight. Advanced academics is also part of our state accountability through our CCMR score. College readiness for a CCMR indicator is earned by either scoring a three or higher on the AP exam, meeting the TSI criteria and reading in math, including SAT and college prep courses, earning the associate's degree, or earning a college credit through our dual-language or OnRamps courses. Now here's the thing about CCMR data, it's what we call lagging data, meaning that what you see for accountability is actually the senior class for the prior year. For example, the senior class of two thousand and twenty-four will be represented in our twenty-four, twenty-five CCMR accountability. As you can see on the chart, the strides that have been made, not only in advanced academics with, but within our college, our career readiness are seeing great gains in what our CCMR indicators are looking like. This doesn't come without a whole lot of hard work from our teachers, our staff, our administrators, our parents, and most of all, you guys are kids. Because it's more than just a CCMR indicator, it's about these guys on the screen. We're continuing to identify how we identify GT students in elementary, providing opportunity to earn high school credits in middle school, expanding college credit offerings, and one of the biggest ones, I think, is allowing our students to experience college-level academics with a lecture layer of support from our BISD staff. And I'll say, all of those systems that we're building are starting to show great gains from the, all the work that everybody's doing on a daily basis. And I just say, I couldn't be more proud of the work that everyone has put into building these structures to continue to move advanced academics forward in BISD. That is all that we have this evening. Are there any questions?
From the board.
And everything, your heart, everything that you put into, everything that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's also in our package, the stamp, the girl's stamp. Can you, how many girls went? What, kind of, what was their experience?
Our resident experts.
This is a good time for you to come up.
Yeah, so that's an event that UT holds every year. It's to encourage K through eight students, girl students. It's a girl-centered, a event centered around girls, although it's all-inclusive. This year, we took about two hundred students, a total of two hundred and fifty folks, including the volunteers and chaperones that joined us. We took five buses, we provided the lunch for the students on that day, and they had a ton of fun. They got to explore the UT campus, dress up in hazmat suits, and hold hissing cockroaches, and make slime, and just do all the, you know, fun sciency things, and the kids couldn't have had a better time. So it was really, truly, you know, one of those great events that connects to all the things that they're doing here.
All right, moving along to our facilities and operations report. Energy management, we have Lee Raspberry, our Director of Construction and Planning. Welcome, Mr. Raspberry.
Good evening. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Edwards. Happy to be here with you this evening to discuss our district energy management program. Before I get started, though, I wanna, I wanna, it's important to distinguish what the difference between energy management is and what it is not, because I think this, this gets a little confusing sometimes with folks. But energy man, energy management for us is, it's a responsible, proactive approach to using our energy resources, utilizing our energy resources. It, it, most people are pragmatic about, about how they go about using energy in the classroom and in the campuses anyway. It's a strategy for measuring and monitoring the use and consumption of energy resources. We gather a lot of data. A lot of this is, a lot of this is data entry, and then analyzing data to look for areas of opportunity within the district. It's a proven method for reducing spending, capturing savings, and promoting sustainable facility operations. That being, putting the least amount of load on the environment as we build new high-performance schools and buildings, okay? It's a valuable teaching tool to help educate students in the community. We always wanna try to loop in students and involve students when we do energy management. When I became a certified energy manager about fifteen years ago, things were a little bit different. Thankfully, energy management has evolved over the last fifteen years. We don't go around turning stuff off and shutting the lights off on people and that sort of thing. That's not what we do. That's, that's not good for, that's not good for kids. It's not good for business. And so, and so what we do is we try to involve kids, we STEM kids. I've heard, heard that mentioned earlier. I've worked with STEM kids. I've had, I've had high school students intern with us to do energy management projects. So it's a, it's a valuable teaching tool as well. What energy management is not, this is important. It's not a strategy to, to save money by, by cutting off lights and doing it at the expense of impacting student achievement and teaching. That's not what energy management is. That's not what responsible energy management is. It's not a means to inconvenience teachers and staff or restrict instructional, instructional creativity in the classroom. It's not about walking up down the hallway and telling people what they can and cannot have in their classrooms. That's not what, that's not what responsible energy management is. And it's not an excuse to cut corners on construction projects, which we know a lot about, for the benefit, for the benefit of, of saving money. If, if we can opt to put a more high, a higher efficiency piece of equipment in our campuses that has a longer useful life than something that's less expensive and less energy efficient, we, we, we take a close look at those things. It's important to do that. Here's what our energy management master plan looks like. We start with the creation of a strategic plan, which we've already done. We move from there to obtain accurate, inaccurate information database. We've already compiled three years, almost three complete years of energy bills, and we've begun analyzing energy over the last three years, energy being both electricity and heating fuel. We also do water as well. That's part of the program. We provide a methodology for continuing analysis. How do we continue to analyze this, this information? And then what do we do with the results of the, of the analysis? How do we make decisions about, about responsible energy conservation measures in the district with the, with the information that we have? We produce an evolving facility improvement program. The key to this is being evolving. When we develop an energy management plan, this is not something that we develop and we put away, we shelve it, we say we're done with our energy management plan. This gets reviewed annually, and, and we have to be flexible. We have to be able to make changes to an energy management plan, again, that are responsible and that are also in the, the best interest of the district and, and the students. District baselines. In order to, in order to know where we need to go, we have to establish where we've been and where we're currently at. So we have, we've developed our, our baselines for the district. Our energy utilization index for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year was forty-six point nine kilobtuas per square foot. That is four percent lower than the Energy Star national median for K-12 schools. So we're not, we're not in bad shape now. We're not in bad shape now. I mean, that's, that's, that's a good place to start from. Better to be four percent lower than the median than higher in any of the categories. So we're starting from a good place. In January, we partnered with SECO, the State Energy Conservation Office, to come in and do a PEA or a preliminary energy assessment of all of our district facilities and provide recommendations for energy-reducing opportunities and strategies. They've completed that assessment. We still need to sit down and, and digest all of the information that they provided. It's about a seventy-page report, and I look forward to coming back and reporting to you guys on, on that report itself. In two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, the district spent about almost two point five million for electricity and heating fuel in the district. If we were to just, if, if we just took a five percent number and we reduced it, by two thousand and twenty-six, we could save the district nearly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's not about that amount of savings, really. That's not what drives the program. What drives the program is being good stewards of our, of our energy resources and our, and our energy conserva, and our natural resources. That's what, that's what drives. If you do that, if you, if you do that and put that in place, then you'll see those numbers. But that, the number's not the driving force behind the program. So what, what the critical path looks like, or how we're rolling this out. Our EM, our energy, energy management program approval has already taken place. We've drafted a message. We've selected the communication channel. I'm here today to deliver our EM, our energy management concept message to the board. And then we're going to start moving it out to the campuses, discussing this with principals, getting feedback from the principal. It's important, it's important to get feedback about staff and about, about the way staff operates in the campuses. I already know how the campuses operate as a, as a building, but we need to get, we need to get feedback from the occupants, right? And we're gonna take that information, and then we're going to, we're gonna do some campus presentations after the first of the year when, when students or when the teachers come back for professional development. Then I'm gonna start in kind of doing the energy assessments in the campuses. So campus by campus, we'll do a very comprehensive energy assessment, even though that SECO has already done a kind of a higher level one. We drill down into the, into the nuts and bolts of, of all of that stuff inside the campuses. And then we'll start reporting probably November timeframe, November, December of, of this year. And, and that's when we're gonna start, we're gonna start monitoring, and we're gonna, we're gonna start seeing where we're at with our energy and what we can do to possibly reduce and, and capitalize on some of these, some of these savings or cost avoidance, if you will. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the critical path. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know this is kind of fast and furious, but we can always come back down the road and, and have a, a longer discussion about it if you like. Sure.
The new schools coming online, I know you showed us the district numbers, but I would assume you're also looking at the new construction and comparing it to some of our older schools?
Yep.
And then, as we have the new ones come on, or, you know, is technology changing that quick that we can have increased efficiency in just a couple of years?
Yep, absolutely. So what we do when we build a brand-new school, we, we want that school to be, be operational for one year before we start to capture data. Because it takes about a year for a brand-new building, especially a one hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot building, to kind of work out the kinks for all the HVAC systems to, to, to be, that have been commissioned to, to start functioning properly. We're looking at a load on the building, so people coming and going. We've developed, we started to develop strategies in the building. The building starts to understand, believe it or not, what's happening in its, in its own spaces. And so it takes about a year, so we really don't start capturing any information from brand-new campuses for a year. It, it, a year plus one, we start to pull in the data from that school. By that time, everything's kind of leveled out, and we can start looking at where we're at with our new schools. But the system, the systems that we put in place in our new, in our new campuses, we put all high efficiency, some of it's code-driven, but some of it we make, some of it we make responsible choices about when we're spec-ing equipment for these campuses. Sometimes we, we choose something that's, that's got a Sometimes we, we choose something that's, that's got a longer lifespan or longer life cycle and, and over something that's just a throwaway piece of equipment. We try to do the best that we can for the district that way.
Thank you. It'd be great to see the data when it comes in, especially with all the air conditioning units that, over the years that we've replaced, you know, they got to be more efficient and probably a lot of things moving to LED.
And we're tracking that now.
Right.
Tracking that now.
Between the older schools and, and the newer schools?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you.
Are, are we seeing a difference between the older schools and the newer schools as far as energy efficiency? Or are we making updates to the older schools as?
So, so there's a lot that can be done in the older schools, too. I mean, the schools are what they are. The school, the, the building envelopes are, we're not going to be changing a lot with, with respect to the building envelopes. But a lot of it is, a lot of it is, is how the, how the, how the occupants in the space treat the space. And so, you know, you can, you can only wring out as much as you can wring out and then you're, I mean, that's all you can do. And that's okay, that's okay. But, but energy management's kind of this constantly moving target. It's not a static proposition. And so as technology continues to advance, you know, with the onset of LED technology 15, 20 years ago, we were like, yeah, we're getting rid of CFLs and we're going to LEDs. And, I mean, that's cut energy by 40% in most, in most buildings, you know? And we can continue to experience a lot of that in our older buildings. We're not going to leave them behind. We're going to bring them with us. Right? 125, 125. Anyway, so any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Great job. All right, speaking of Mr. White. We'll move into our financial report, budget development update number two. Mike White, our Chief Financial Officer, welcome.
Thanks, sir. So, as he said, we're coming back, major budget update for this month. The story so far in this session has really been more lack of action than the amount of things that have happened so far. So some of these slides, I'm kind of following up on kind of what I briefed you on last month. You know, you, this, the governor had, I think it was seven emergency items. These were the most pertinent to us. And I'll say that the whole point of, of creating that, those emergency items is so you can take action in the first 60 days and prioritize those things. And 57 days in, I think we're where we were when we started, which is still discussing. So unlikely to, to be anything before Friday. So somewhat business as usual, though those items do still remain a priority. So I wanted to summarize, now that the House has come out with some of their, they fleshed out some of the, the aspects of their ESA bill, that being House Bill 3. So here, here you can see that the Senate is where they were in, early on in this session, $10,000 per student and 1,500 additional for students with special needs. And then a breakdown of 80% to be filled with students who previously attended public schools or are either low-income or have disability, unless all those funds aren't committed. And if all the funds aren't used, then all bets are off with that breakdown and, and then they go to whoever is interested. House Bill 3 is interesting in that it pegs the amount at 85% of the statewide average, which is a little under $11,000. And, and with a special priority on students with disabilities. So depending on the severity of those disabilities, it can go up to $30,000. And they haven't really fleshed out exactly what that means and where the level of, of funding throughout there. But what's interesting about their allocation here, or I guess the priority for students is it's four tiers, which, which start with students with disabilities, of course, that being the priority. And I won't read everything on the screen, but they, they use the same poverty level indicator as, as Senate Bill 2, that, that five times the federal poverty level, which is about $156,000. And so then other low-income families and then other families and then those earning above that 500% threshold. So now we know a little bit more than we knew before. Both continue to fund a billion dollars set aside in, in their budget bills. So, and even the Speaker of the House has, has publicly said that they have the support for it. So I, I think at this point, all indications are it's a lot of behind-the-scenes negotiation, at least on the House side, figuring out what the priorities are before they send it over to the Senate. So here's a stark difference. The Senate Bill 3 passed through the Senate quickly. It felt like it was the first week, whereas House Bill 3, it's, it seems at, at face value to have the votes, right? There's the author of the bill and then co-signed by 75 other state reps. So I imagine if any, everybody that co-authored the bill goes on to vote for it, that would be at least the 76 votes needed to pass in the House. So currently looking like that'll happen, it's just a matter of when. I've heard anecdotally, you know, a couple of weeks looks to be the timeframe. So you're talking mid to late March. A couple of things we talked about last time, priorities, things to watch, basic allotment so far, the story remains the same. There's nothing in the Senate bill related to adjusting the basic allotment, whereas House Bill 2 has a $220 increase. So for us, that's about $2.5 million. So very helpful. And then special, special populations funding, there is a little bit of funding in both. There is a move towards funding kids based on, on the type of services received as opposed to the instructional setting, which is probably more appropriate. And, and $1,000 set aside for each initial evaluation for those students. So that's, and we're still working to quantify that, but any additional funding, especially in that realm, definitely helps. And the methodology for tax relief, we talked about the idea of we've used, seen compression play out in recent years. We've seen the homestead exemption continue to increase up to $100,000 currently. So it's, it's, it's really a battle kind of between the Senate Bill 4 and then what the, whatever the, the House comes up with, with their preference on compression. Both have a little bit of compression, about 3 cents to the floor, where most, a lot of districts have hit the bottom floor. So it means it doesn't matter if our values went up 10%, we're kind of at that compression floor. So lowering of that about 3 cents, and there's a House Bill 8, which seems to be popular, which has another 3.3 cents of compression on top of that that's funded. So not the big moves we've seen so far, but incremental progress on compression. And of course, a lot of support, popular support for going from $100,000 per, per homestead to $140,000. So remains to be seen in negotiation what comes of that. So since the, early on, the House was quiet, but in, in recent days, it come out, and this is not what I'm calling it, this is what they, they dubbed it themselves, the Texas Two-Step, that being their school finance bill, House Bill 2, and, and then their ESC, ESA bill, which is House Bill 3. And so there's the $220 mentioned. There was, in previous years, every time the pays allotment went up, there was a 30% commitment towards compensation. Currently, they have 40% in the new bill. So I thought that was interesting. And also put a reference there just to cover for inflation since 2019, it would be closer to $1,300. So not, not in the territory we would love to do all the things that we need. A number of things in here on both sides relate to the teacher incentive allotment. There are so many particular small adjustments. So I'll just say that until that gets fleshed out, I'll report back exactly what that looks like. But both are, both are committed to, you know, the, the vehicle of the teacher incentive allotment continuing to, to grow. We already talked about that 60-day window looking unlikely. I thought this was important. This is the kind of the rough timeline on values and key, you know, milestones throughout the process. Around this time last year, we did a significant appeal on our, on our T2 values, our comptroller values, right? And that was a, a big adjustment in, in funding that came through, I don't think we received until August. You guys might recall that. We're doing a similar process. But because last year really related to the significant homestead increase, this year we really don't have that adjustment. Right now, we're looking for about $450,000 in funding, which would be bringing down our T2 about $69 million. So definitely a fruitful process, something we're considering, or that we're currently in the process of getting home. If it's, if it's successful, would, would be a, a little bit of an increase for this year's funding. Still waiting on April values. Early indications are that nothing unexpected, probably in that 5% to 7% increase, similar to last year, and then certified values in July. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our process and kind of some of the things that we, we have on our plate. Kind of broke them into two categories, right? So as we start this budget process, which we don't know how much funding we're going to have, right, and the, and the challenges that go with that, we have some realities. We know that we're going to grow, right? The demographer says 370 students, we're using that for now. We know we're going to open Adleton Elementary, and we know we're going to convert two intermediates to middle schools. So those, the costs of those are things that we're tracking and quantifying and what I'll call the have-to kind of things, right? Because that, those will be the reality regardless. Other priorities we talked, we talked about, I know MTSS came up last, last month, but, you know, of course, teacher pay and, and support staff, I mean, pay across the board is, continues to be a challenge, right? And when other districts are, have the same struggles and they're also shuttering schools and, and closing programs. So, you know, social workers, APs, things that we've either, you know, held back on or had to cut, you know, last year this time was, was significant. We've had to make some difficult decisions. And so we're working through those things with the great unknown being, are we going to get zero? Are we going to get $5 million in new funding, anywhere in between? Really makes it difficult to finalize some things. So I'm hoping by this time next month, I have a much better, you know, update for you that, that fleshes some things out. And another priority, as our, as we continue to grow, meeting the needs of those kids with, you know, special programs. That's something that we've spent a lot of time on, working with that, that team to, to make sure we, we don't lose sight of, of their needs. Other items to note, I just looking for, for the tangible throughout this process. Interest revenue rates continue to hold steady in that 4.6, 4.7 territory on our investments, down a little bit from the high of 5.4, but that's revenue that, that does help. I mean, it's small, but it's a couple million dollars. So, and then Shar's revenue, of course, not going our, our way, but I felt like this is going on across the state. There was a point in time where we got over $2 million in Shar's revenue, and this is reimbursable services provided to kids with special needs and certain populations, federal revenue. It's to the point now where we're only budgeting $400,000 for next year. That's the reality we're faced with. So you've probably seen that on the news. That's, you know, a big issue between the federal government and the state of Texas and the way those, you know, services are tracked and the whole process and auditing the year 2011, if that tells you, you know, how efficient it's been. So continuing to monitor that and throughout the process. One last piece of information I wanted to share, kind of gives you some perspective on our, our district's commitment to, to supporting our campuses. I just wanted to pull together some data. This is, this is all first-rating data from administrative costs, right? This is, if you'll recall from the fall, one of the indicators in the financial integrity rating is a certain threshold for, for being graded on your administrative overhead. And so here, you see anywhere from 7% to 15% are peers. I tried to pull those in the area, include, pulled in Austin. I just want to clarify, the first yellow bar is the state as a whole. The second yellow bar is the median of this group only, and the third one is the average of this group. So you'll notice we're not on this, this listing because I wanted to do the big reveal and show you where we perform against our peers. And so I think that's indicative of, of the board's commitment to our schools, the superintendent's administration. So we haven't lost sight of that. I just wanted to make sure you guys understand how seriously we take our job and, and as we go through and make decisions in coming weeks with the dollars we have available, that, that we, you know, we have that in our sights and it's a priority for us. Lastly, the budgetary process. Of course, I would have hoped for more, you know, tangible results so far. We're a little delayed here. It's challenging to, to a lot of heavy lifting without knowing the funding available. So we're doing a lot of scenarios and prep work and, and discussion at this point. But as we get into April, we start to, you know, kind of crystallize a budget draft number one, based on the information we have available, just be understanding that right now, it's pretty uncertain. Hoping that, you know, we're, especially since they're really in agreement overall, which is, you know, and the big issue, which is ESAs and the rest, and the budget bills are so similar, you would think we'd be able to, to adhere to a regular timeline and have the information to, to go by this, our normal process. So hopeful for that. I just don't have as many updates as I'd like in March. But this is kind of gives you an idea of where we are in the, in the greater, you know, the big scheme. And I'll come back to you in April with, with more updates. And I, again, I want to thank you for hiring me as well. So I didn't want to miss that. I didn't know that was a part of this presentation, but thank you. Happy to be here.
The 5 million shortfall last year from the increase in the homestead that we did not receive, and they said there was a flawed formula, a committee assigned to that, and it was obviously part of our $8 million shortfall last year and having to, you know, get everything back in budget. Is there any word about that? Now they're going to raise it to possibly to 140? Is it going to be flawed, too, and we're going to receive less money again?
I think it's more of a timing issue. Ultimately, what that does, you know, when you require, when it goes up, right, it triggers the, the November election to amend the Constitution, sets back tax bills, sets back some of the things that go into that normal process. Where normally by late January, we have solid comptroller values and we, you know, you have this audit period. I wasn't here this time last year, but I imagine it was pretty difficult to navigate that because of that timing. And, and it could. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it would affect this process, but maybe this time next year, if that does happen, we'll just have to, it makes it very difficult to do what I do when the, when the formulas are, are so heavily dependent on that number and that number is subject to change. So.
But any word on the, the committee that's looking at the flawed formula? Is the state going to add it up and straighten up?
I don't, I don't know that they, they admit that it's flawed, sir. I think that it is a little frustrating. Several, several of the classes I took at Tazbo were related to that process and, and I don't know how much insight I can offer other than to say that, that, you know, the biggest concern for us is making sure within that state, that 5% plus or minus threshold of, of what they think our values are worth. In terms of the timing and the, and the difficulty of projecting our, our revenue and reporting to the board and it not being, you know, so late in the year, you know, that's, it's interesting times that we live in. I, I don't know. I will keep my finger on it, but.
And then I know it's so, in other words, we're going to be another 5 million shortfall from, from tax revenue.
Temporary. Of course, you know, at the end of the day, when we appeal and those adjustments get made, but again, the year was over last year, if you guys recall. It was August when we got that money. So it's hard to explain how, you know, how that happens, but I'll say we're kind of operating in the dark a little bit, you know? And so I will do my best to keep my finger on that and report to you as I know it.
Mike, Mr. Edwards, the, I'm glad to see that one of our priorities is looking for our teacher pay and giving that a priority here. Because I know from what we've seen tonight, as far as even the presentations we've had tonight, all the successes and all the outcomes we've had, teachers aren't doing this for the income, they're doing it for those outcomes. And that's what we need to keep focusing on. And, and hopefully the legislature will agree with us and get us posted at 1,300 and not leave it at 220.
Yes, sir, that would be great. That would definitely be the most equitable thing. And I'll be praying for the same, same result, sir. I assure you, I would love to report that to you.
How do you, excuse me, Mike, how do you, you mentioned right now you're going to the department heads and they're going to try to come up with a budget. How do you guide them in this process?
Yeah.
Do you just say, hey, look at last year and let's go with that?
Well, that's a good question. Part of the reason my delay in the normal process is, is how do I, what, what does that messaging look like? Because I don't know if I'm going to have to require them to, to take, you know, non-payroll cuts and, and those kind of things. So their departmental budgets right now, we're going to put out as, as the current level is, is the current state. But, you know, with a big caveat, caveat in bold, in large font that says, hey, we're kind of operating in the dark, we're going to, we need to start this process because we have work to do. So we could come back to you later. I mean, of course, those were sent out late April, early May last year, that process. It's a different situation now, you know, we should know by now which way the wind is blowing, but we don't. We do prioritize teacher pay and, and MTSS and, and all the things that we need for our kids, but don't know how much funding. So to answer your question, current level with the caveat, and we have asked them if there's additional needs that we need to be aware of, please send that under, you know, through a separate process, and we'll be sending that out shortly. And so, and then. And so, and then the staffing challenges, you know, the teachers, I mean, principals and campuses and chomping at the bit to hire and, and start to assemble their team for next year. And, and we're balancing, trying to figure out what that looks like. So hesitant to make any commitments without knowing, you know, what we'll need to do. Because I want to present a balanced budget, but also want to take care of our staff and, and programmatic needs, special needs, all the things that, that are a priority for the board and the superintendent.
I did see, and it dealt with the human resources, done the staff support. It was continuing to, I, I think it was the, discussing the staff needs for 2025, 2026. How does that play into the budget? I don't know if that's, maybe at the department level, but, you know, they're discussing it right now, so.
Discussing it daily, weekly. It's most of our discussions right now because the non payroll was more or less fixed. So most of our money is people, right? It's teachers and support staff and, and others. So it's really kind of played its outs with staffing meetings that, that are at the cabinet level, HR meetings, you know, talking to HRs, talking to principals. These ladies are, are, you know, in touch with, with those as well. It's, you know, it's a broad number of, of discussions and evaluating our needs and, you know, adjust weekly. Once, you know, every time we look at new data, it seems like we're making tweaks, but mostly focused on trying to plan for the growth, the expected growth, because I don't know exactly how many kids show up on, in August. But so that's the process now. I think it could evolve if we have more information, if we know we have a funding to work with or don't, then of course there may be difficult decisions. Right now, we're kind of, you know, putting together an ideal budget that I think will evolve through the process.
Do, do principals, how do they, how are they kept abreast of the budget, budget constraints? This is what's coming down, just similar to what you just gave us. How do they, how's it communicated to them? You know, we don't know what's going to come down. We don't, we, you know, these, this is kind of the maybes.
Well, I think that, I know Christie and Jennifer and HR have a lot of discussions. Now, hadn't had a whole lot to report yet, so I haven't had a lot of principal discussions at this point, but we discuss it as a cabinet for sure and a lot of side discussions. But again, it's, it's challenging to know what to do there at this point. And I'm hoping in the next few weeks, next month, we have a better handle. But we're trying to focus and separate the have to kind of things versus the things that they definitely would like, but maybe things that, you know, aren't in the final version because of, I mean, it has to come from somewhere, you know? It's ultimately, the low hanging fruit has long been picked, you know?
And they have principal meetings as well. For those, and I'm sure that at the appropriate time, it's, they're getting an update on what's going on and what's available and.
Yes, sir.
One question, and it may be that you don't know the answer. That's not your fault, but.
I don't know the answer, sir.
Early on in the conversations, the legislation was talking about daily attendance and, and versus enrollment funding. Has there been any more traction on that at all?
No, really hasn't. I don't think that's gained any traction at all. The only time that it's really come up that I'm aware of is, is the drawing attention to the fact that the, the funding model for ESAs doesn't seem to be based on attendance. It seems to be based on enrollment. Now, I could have that wrong, but that's what I've seen people take issue with. Now, since they haven't finalized those bills yet, it's hard to say, but surely they would, you know, use the same methodology, because that seems pretty inequitable to hold us to a different standard. But no, it's really not a, it doesn't seem to be a priority this session.
Okay.
I wish it was.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. White? Dr. Lee?
To Ms. Armstrong, just about principal communication. So we've actually had individual meetings with every principal to review their campus staffing situation. They also know that the, the things that Mike listed in his report that are priorities for us, such as, you know, teacher and staff pay increases, such as bringing the MTS program back for our elementary schools, such as providing the second AP for those elementary schools whose enrollment numbers, they know that those are priorities. So that's been communicated to them. And we've also taken their wishlist, I guess, for lack of a better term. You know, they present their case about, you know, my, my numbers in this particular program are really increasing. I would like to have another one of these if, if that's possible. And so our, our HR director, Diana Green, takes a great, you know, takes great notes on those requests. We maintain all of those so that when we're able to make these final decisions, we can. But we're, we're trying to communicate with them along the way when we know information, so.
All right. Good luck. Our past CFOs have, have been able to pull a rabbit out of the hat and meet all those priorities, so.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to human resources. A human resource report is for information only. Are there any questions in regards to the human resource report? All right, moving on to the police department report. Any questions for Chief Bunch?
One thing about HR. So, wow. So we, everybody's said thank you for hiring them to this board. And I just want to point out for the record that we don't hire anyone directly. Just so we're clear, you passed over HR pretty quickly, but I was going to say that just before you finished.
We do have close session coming up.
I wanted to say thank you to the people in the audience who do all of the hiring. You're doing great. Thank you.
All right. Would any board member like to pull the consent agenda items for discussion? At this time, I entertain a motion to.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along to our action items. Consider approval of a memorandum of agreement between the Department of the Navy and Bastrop BISD NJROTC program. Commander David Ellis, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. If you didn't hire me, thank you anyways. I put that in my speech. Real quick, I want to, if I can, say thank you to someone. I got, it's Tammy Pickering. She's our, one of our board members and her daughter Maddie Pickering. She was our CEO last year who came up. So thank you for being here tonight. So what I'm here to talk about is a new memorandum of agreement between the United States Navy and BISD establishing ROTC program at Bastrop High School. So the first thing, everyone's like, you're not in uniform. I'm not, because I want to make sure it's a distinction. I, I'm a BISD employee. I'm not a Navy employee. I do wear the uniform with the ROTC, but I want to make sure that distinction is clear. I'm not talking for the Navy when we do this, but I definitely want to talk about the MOA and some of the great things our program does do. So with that being said, the last MOA was signed in July 2016 by Superintendent Steve Murray. Since then, in 2024, there was change to a Title X. It required a new MOA signed by every unit. So as a result, the Navy's developed a new MOA, and I believe everyone has a copyrighted chance to actually read it. I want to hit some of the, the highlights on it, just so we can kind of talk about some of the things. Some of the things are still the same. We still have to meet a minimum requirement of 100 cadets by October 1st each year. Same thing we always have. It hasn't been a problem for us, but the school's help in getting those cadets has been great. The school still has to establish a department of naval science, which we have here now. Facilities and support, district provides facilities, administrative offices, adequate drill area, IT support, and administrative budgetary and curriculum purposes. Same thing we've been getting every day. The building down there is great. I wish Ms. Garry was not here and want to thank her. She's working with Chief Bunch to get us some upgrades, some paint, maybe new ceilings in there, make it look a little nicer, but the building's been awesome. For instructor requirement, the district will employ at least one retired officer as a senior naval science instructor, that's myself, and one retired enlisted person as a naval science instructor per unit. So Chief Canales back there. And the senior naval science instructor shall participate in meetings where policies, recommendations, or decisions affecting the ROTC program are made, including those related to the employment or discharge ROTC instructors. That's always been in the MOA, but it's something I think we need to really, you know, remember is anything is coming up, I have to be a part of that so I can talk to the Navy and the district what's going on between the two. Navy support, the Navy will continue to provide all the uniforms, government furnished equipment, instructive material, instructional material for the program. They will continue to contribute a portion of the salary for each of the instructors. So as you don't know, the Navy calculates a minimum instructor pay. The Navy picks up half of that bill and then the school district picks up the other half. So you're kind of getting two instructors for the price of one with that. But one thing also remember, that is not the minimum, that's not a cap. Some districts see that as a cap, oh, that's all we got to do. But it's just kind of how they calculate it based off our retired pay. So those are kind of the, some of the things that are similar to the old MOA. But some of the new things, there's a parental consent form now, a new form completed by both the students and the parents. It ensures that everyone understands the ROTC is a voluntary program. Students may choose to withdraw at any time. They also understand there's grooming and uniform requirements. They talk about who's the district Title IX coordinator. All that is in the form that the students and the parents have to sign, and then we maintain that on file here every year. It talks about the dual chain of command, talking about that ROT instructors, we are school district employees, but we also do report to the military service because they are the ones that certify us to be instructors in ROTC. They are now requiring background checks for childcare national agency check inquiries, CNAC investigations. Every five years, instructors have to do those now. Any disciplinary action, the district must notify the Navy within one day on any disciplinary or administration action taken against an ROTC instructor. It used to be, I believe, three days. Now they want it one day if anything happens. And then there's also a new form for the instructors about prohibited activities. It's basically saying no unduly familiar relationships, cannot provide alcohol, drugs, not lend money, no sexual favors, things that are common sense to us. We are writing it every year. We're signing those sheets with our area manager who's in San Antonio, and he has a copy of that, says, okay, you sign it for another year. Those are some of the big changes that they, they added to this new MOA. So, but while you've given me the microphone, if you don't mind, I want to talk about these kids because they're amazing. This program is, the primary objective is instill values of citizenship, service United States, personal responsibility, and sense of accomplishment. It's exceptional leadership development opportunity. Cadets are empowered to run the program themselves. And Chief and I, we provide the guidance based on our years of naval, naval experience. Just last month, the cadets performed their annual area military, area managers inspection, and I'm proud to say they did an outstanding job. They planned, they practiced, they executed the inspection independently. Chief and I, we only facilitated their efforts. They ran that whole thing. Now, as you consider approving this MOA, I ask you continued support for our cadets and instructors. Every morning, cadets are eager to get in the building, and it's just this morning, it's like seven o'clock, I get there and there's already a couple just sitting out there waiting to get in. It's kind of like a home for them. At the end of the day, we have practices, usually four days a week after school, and you know, it's six o'clock and Chief and I are like, okay, practice is over, guys. Go home, you know? And I, I sit there, I'm like, what, what an awesome problem to have, you know, when I got to kick kids out of the school building. But that just shows they're passionate and they're involved in this program. We do this work. We don't get a stipend. We don't get a coach's stipend for this. We spend hours after school on a lot of weekends. We do a lot of things in community. I wish Becky was still here. We do color guard for her all the time. But these are amazing kids. Chief and I will try to do everything we can to prepare them for the future. Our whole goal is have a plan, how can we get you there for graduation? This year, we got five seniors looking to go to college, four joined the military, and four going to tech school. They have plans, and that's our goal. This year alone, our cadets, we won trophies in competitions, we performed over 1,500 man-hours community service. We're sending one cadet to the Navy National Oriented Competition this weekend in Alabama. First time we've ever been. He's going to compete and get schools across the whole country. It's amazing watching what they do. So this program's growing. We're dedicated to the continued success of it. We ask for your backing, your support, but we're not the enemy. Sometimes they see the, the uniforms and they scare. We're, we're not the enemy. We're their teammates, and we hope you can be our teammates in this whole thing. So thank you for your consideration on this. I hope you'll sign the MOA and honored to be working here. Unless you have any questions?
Commander Ellis, just out of curiosity, you and Chief Moros, the chain of communication, y'all supervisor, is it the high school principal or is it?
So I work directly for the principal, yes, sir. And then so the Navy, we have area managers, there's 32 areas around the country. Our area goes from Austin down to the Rio Grande Valley. And so he's got 30, 30 schools. And so on the Navy side, when it comes to financing of our inspections, everything like that, we go through him. As the certifier for us, that's why any communications dealing with the instructors go to them, because then they take it to the Navy saying, do we need to look at certification process or not? But my direct supervisor, principal.
Any other questions for Commander Ellis?
Ellis, so I'm number eight on the volunteer, on the voluntary student enrollment. So how are students made aware of the program?
Oh, for, okay. So we go to the middle school. We'll go there and recruit. The middle school will come to us. They have all the eighth grade invasions, what they call it. So they'll come, they'll pump all the middle schoolers through there. I've been asked to go to the middle school on a few occasions to talk to students about it. So that's their primary recruiting tool to try to get them, you know, what is this program about? And then a lot of it is from the cadets when they get in the program and then they start telling their friends about it. You know, Maddie could probably talk about that. You know, they bring these kids in when they find there's a place where, you know, the, really inclusive, you know, we got different backgrounds. I got varsity sports players. I got people in band. I got kids who are just academic and that's, you know, it's everyone together. And I think it, it, it gives them a home where they're not judged on anything.
Yes. I love the program. I wish more kids would, would do it. So I was just curious if we max out on enrollment.
I would love to get higher. And we have been. So we're growing. We had this, at the beginning of the year, we had like 50 freshmen, which is a big number. Now, we don't keep them all. They, there's some that are like, not what I thought. And, and, you know, they, they go do something else. But the word of mouth from these kids, it, it's growing the program. I would, I think our building, we could probably fit, I don't know, what, we take 125, 130, and then we might be maxed out in there, but hey, if we want to talk about a new building. I've got plans.
The comment?
Ellis, I believe that you're being recognized or your program is being recognized on Monday, the 24th at Commissioner's Court?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell them about that?
We, um, we're a part of the Vietnam, the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War Commemorative Society. And actually, and this is all Chief, Chief Canales did, you know, he really spearheaded this. Out of all these organizations who are recognizing the veterans from Vietnam, we are in the top 15% in the nation on that. By all the, just, you know, going out, we've had veterans come in the building, and we had a guy came in to fix our commo lock on a safe. He's a Vietnam vet. Had him tell, tell a story and we recognized them, gave them the pins and the certificates from the president. At the red, white, and blue ball, that is every year at Veterans Day, we bring all the veterans up there and recognize them. And like I said, that's, that's this man over there. He's, he's the one who did that and really got that ball rolling, but top 15%, so thanks for bringing that up. That's awesome.
This might be for Jennifer too, but regarding the ASVAB or something similar to that, is that something the, it doesn't stipulate that in this document, but I was curious about.
No. So we, we do encourage our, our cadets to take the ASVAB, especially their junior year, really, you know, go do it. Even if you don't want to do the military, go take it. The College of Career Center, they actually coordinate the ASVAB tests at the school. If you look at my list of what I'm at for ROTC, actually military recruiting is the bottom. So I'm not there to get them in the military, but I also, you know, I encourage it because, you know, some of the cadets, you can see like this, this is a perfect fit for you to go in the military. So we do have study guides for the ASVAB. We do talk the ASVAB. In fact, one year we gave them a practice test of the ASVAB, just so they can kind of see what is it like and what do you need to know. But then we do encourage them to go take it anyways and that's what we do.
Thank you, thank you Chief.
All right, any other questions? All right, this time I move for approval of memorandum of agreement between the Department of the Navy and Bash Drop ISD, NJ ROTC program as presented. And we have a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you for giving back and everything that y'all do means a lot, so. All right, moving along to our information items. We have Board of Trustees calendar events as well as enrollment, single budget purposes, more than $50,000. Any questions in regards to the information items from the board? All right, if there are none, we'll move on into closed session. The board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on our agenda this evening, followed by the Texas Government Code 551.074, administrators' contracts. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes into open meeting. And it is now 7:00 PM and we will go into closed session.
All right, the time is 7:41 PM and the board will now reconvene in open session. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Superintendent's recommendation on administrators contracts as presented in closed session.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are none, meetings adjourn. Have a great evening. Thank all of y'all.